Head and open. And. So, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to open up the regular meeting of the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. Today is Thursday, December 15, 3:30, and if we could have a roll call.
Director Abrika?
Here.
I do not see Director Combs on just yet. Director Berg?
Here.
Director Schway?
There.
And Director Pine?
Here.
Let's say we have a quorum, and we'll probably be joined shortly by Drew. So our next item is approval of the agenda, and if there are no requests to modify anything, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Roll call?
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Berg?
Yes.
Director Schway?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is the minutes of November 17. If there are no corrections or questions on them, also, I can entertain a motion for approval of that. Hearing none? Have a motion?
Action, so I'll move approval.
Okay, I'll second. And roll call.
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Bert?
Yes.
Director Schway?
I will abstain.
Okay. Director Pine?
Yes.
And Director Combs has just joined. Director Combs, would you like to vote on approval of the minutes?
Yes.
And that's a yes, too. I guess that sounded like, okay. Yeah, so let the record show that Director Combs has joined us. Okay, now we'll proceed with item number four, which is public comment. So this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the JPA on any topic, any issue that is not on the agenda. And just understanding, we cannot engage in any lengthy discussions, and would ask anyone to stay within the time limit, if possible. So, Miko, do we have any requests at this point that you can see?
I have not received any request to speak on this item, and I don't see any hands raised.
Okay.
Anyone like to make a public comment at this point? Okay, I'm not seeing it.
So we'll proceed then with our next item, number five, and that's the consent agenda. And we have three items under consent agenda, so I'll first ask if there are any requests to pull any of those to be from the board members or members of the public. And if not, then also I'll ask if any members of the public want to comment. Sounds like there may not be any, so I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar for tonight. Move.
I will second that.
All right, move in second. Roll call?
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Berg?
Yes.
Director Schway?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Consent agenda has passed.
Okay, motion passed. And so next, we have a study session on the Safer Bay, and also giving some direction at the end of this. And so let me just make some prefatory comments on this, and then we'll get started. We do have a written report, including a timeline that our director put together. So just a little context, I think last year when the board had a, we had a little strategic planning session, and you know, there were three things that I remember we sort of highlighted that we wanted to to keep track of it this year, definitely now into this next year, but one of them had to do with the Safer Bay project. And not only the technical parts, you might say, as a project per se, that it's kind of moving along the studies, but also issues of financing, issues of governance, since we are a combined entity, and this project is fairly complex, not that the other ones are not, but this one, I think, is even more, more complex. And so we wanted to sort of keep track of that. And I think at this point, because the project has continued, we, there have been some additional funding that's come in, et cetera, et cetera, and it's also gotten, I think, more attention perhaps. And so I think tonight, from my perspective tonight, is that we want to start to put on the on the table, so to speak, speak different issues, concerns, questions, that we're not necessarily going to answer tonight, but I think in the next several months, definitely in the next six months, I think the JPA does need to begin to address those for, you know, the future development of that, of that project. So I did also ask our director, Margaret, to, you know, send out an email to all the you know, people who sort of kept track or keep track of the JPA, including some public members who regularly attend, as well as all the alternates, and, you know, anybody else that we have in our immediate network, again, for that purpose, so that we can start compiling basically a list of those concerns, those questions, that I think the JPA will have to address more specifically later on. So that's kind of the spirit of tonight's report, is to start getting into that, and like I said, not necessarily, we may not be able to answer every question, and that's really not the purpose at this point, but at some point, we do need to start delving more deeply into that. So and then also, I think last month or a couple of months ago, we did have some report on this. You know, there was a request that we at least in, you know, reaffirm or confirm that the JPA is still working on this, and that we're going to continue, and then again, later on in the spring, I think, as we can start getting into more specific stuff. So anyway, that's a little preface to that, to our kind of study session tonight, which again, it's continuing a couple of other ones that we've had this past year on the Safer Bay. And so with that, I'll ask our director, Margaret, to you know, give us a quick overview of, you know, the report that we have there, and then I'll just open it up to to us and the public to contribute any questions, concerns they have. Yeah.
I know that this slide is probably going to be a lot of very small details to see on your screens, however, everyone is looking at this, but putting ourselves in a geographical context may help describe both the scope of the project and better frame sort of how we got here, where we are, where we think we may be going. In your board report, there is a description of the context, and there is a description of sort of where we find ourselves in this project at this time. So rather than go through that in great detail, I'll summarize that by saying, if you follow the the either solid colored line or dashed lines, from the bottom right of your screen, I'll be working my way north and then west across this landscape of this map. In the bottom, below Bay Road, that's the area south of Bay Road on the shores of East Palo Alto, is the segment of the project alignment that is considered Phase One. It's the part of our SEQA approach that is going to be the project level SEQA. Everything else is planned for a programmatic level SEQA analysis. And backing up a moment from that, all of the stretch along both communities and further south, where this map doesn't show, the shoreline is vulnerable to both sea level rise and tidal flooding. As the board may recall, the JPA was enjoined to facilitate the feasibility study for the city of Palo Alto's shoreline. It's important that those feasibility studies echo one another north and south of the creek, so that our protection standards are the same, and our approaches with regulatory agencies and for mitigation measures can also be harmonized, and wherever possible, of course, where resources can be leveraged. So as we work our way around the bay shoreline, areas of both East Palo Alto and Menlo Park are vulnerable to tidal flooding, as well as in East Palo Alto to creek flooding. As you may recall, when the Reach One area was completed, we still had to address the issue of tidal flooding and sea level rise flooding to remove those residents in East Palo Alto from the FEMA floodplain and from the burden of costly FEMA flooding insurance. That insurance burden is also borne by others who dwell in the very proximate locations around the shoreline. So residents of Bell Haven in Menlo Park and other parts of East Palo Alto are feeling that economic constraint and are eager, we hear from our recent community meeting, to have that burden alleviated. There is a strong desire in our communities to ensure that both recreation and livelihoods are protected by our eventual shoreline project called Safer Bay. So again, back to the alignments here, as we move north from that solid golden or bright yellow line, we have an area of red dashed lines next to the Ravenswood Open Space Preserve. Those alignments are very speculative. All of the dashed lines are very speculative. In fact, the exact alignment for the yellow area south of Bay Road is still not firmly confirmed and won't be for quite a while until we get through the SEQA process. As we move north into the what's called the Pond SF2 area, that's a zone of incredible complexity. It's complex from an environmental perspective. There are sensitive species. It's complex from a hydrological and geotechnical perspective. It's complex from a property ownership perspective. How that alignment is sorted out, which path is decided upon, what kind of structure is going to be there, is very speculative at this point. It's important to note that there are very important habitat features that the Don Edwards Wildlife Refuge and the South Bay Salt Pond Restoration Project, together with the, in addition to the ponds R1 and R2 to the north, are looking at very closely, because there are competing mitigation, competing restoration objectives. Everyone, of course, wants to see the beautiful blue-green heart of the San Francisco Bay restored to its salt marsh glory. But when we make those kinds of restorations, we also impact other species who have become accustomed to higher and drier kinds of ecosystems. So there is going to be a long and complicated discussion, planning, negotiating, decision-making over time about how best to implement both sea level rise protection and bay restoration to, to be respectful for balancing all of those needs. We also have critical infrastructure in the area. You'll see where the map points to the Cooley Landing PG&E substation. For those who were participants in or familiar with the Menlo Park Brick Grant, we were very fortunate to have both PG&E and Facebook, now Meta, as project partners in planning and submitting that what's called a the Brick Grant, which is through FEMA, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Grant. We had their public, public, excuse me, their private participation in this, because both of these entities realized that by combining forces, they would benefit the community, they would benefit themselves, and we were able to collaboratively put together this grant proposal that protected the private property, but also the critical infrastructure in the case of the PG&E substation that protects over 300,000 power customers in both Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties. I would also like to note for just a moment that there is a much smaller, but still important substation just at Bay Road by the Cooley Landing Community Center on the landward side of that yellow line. So the Safer Bay project is important for these two energy, critical infrastructure pieces. We also have a good partner in Caltrans. Caltrans is responsible for the approach along Highway 84 to the Dumbarton Bridge and the bridge itself. Their processes for evaluating and then securing funding for large projects like a Highway 84 bridge approach in the Dumbarton Bridge landing and bridge itself are very long-term. But they are, and we are communicating often and closely about our progress. And I am aware that they are positioning this project, the Dumbarton Bridge project, in their queue of projects to be evaluated and funded, in part because they want to parallel their work with ours as closely as they can. So moving further now along the Bayfront Expressway, the Menlo Park Brick Grant addresses the Bayfront Expressway and up to ponds, what you see toward the left of your screen, Pond S and S5 and R5. The small sections along the the last little stretch of Menlo Park there, and the little yellow dashed line at the huts, this, along this slough, which is the entrance road to the Bedwell Bayfront Park, may be addressed through a separate grant, hopefully hypothetically, through One Shoreline. This entrance area to the Bedwell Bayfront Park is something that the city of Menlo Park has been working on. They have some preliminary designs, they have some preliminary funding, and it's hoped that some additional grant funding can help close that critical stretch up to the boundary with the city of Redwood City, which is up here at the very farthest left. Again, Menlo Park comes along here, along Marsh Road. So this is the outlying edge of Menlo Park. This closes a critical gap, and this extent here, up to and through and around the PG&E substation is the Brick Grant. And all of this extent has been preliminarily funded by a generous grant from the South, excuse me, the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority in two parts. First, a million-dollar grant to begin our SEQA work, and second, provisionally a grant for $3.98 million, which will see us through completing SEQA and getting permits. And we can go into some of, some of the additional details, but that in a nutshell is the Safer Bay project. In your board, in your board packet, you will have the timeline of historical engagement in the shoreline. And, and that brings us, if you, if you go through that timeline, that will bring you up to where we are today.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, well, yeah, thank you for that display and explanation. I think that's a good start. And so, again, I'll open it up. And like I said, you know, we could even put a time on our discussion, because we could go on for a long time, and we have other topics, but, you know, primarily, again, questions, concerns, observations, whatever, requests for information, because I was thinking about that. In fact, maybe, you know, I'm going to take the prior of the chair and start, to start this time, because I, I'm thinking, you know, for the next six months, we're going to need additional kinds of information. So one question, I think, or one request for information for the JPA Board for future meetings, and to start preparing for, you know, more details would be, one for me is a list of all the property owners, because we know there are governments involved here, we also have big corporations, we have Caltrans. So one would be, if we could have a list of who owns what, encompassing this shoreline project.
Director Abrika, we can get that for you easily. We had to do that as part of our notice of preparation for our SEQA.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah. So again, yeah, so you know, that's one thing. The other one, and I know some of this information, we have it around, but I think it'll be, we can package it more. Another list, another list would be all the different, it kind of goes with the property perhaps, but the different jurisdictions, the different entities involved, because, again, there are permitting agencies, there are you know, other jurisdictions involved, whatever, all the jurisdictions involved. And then a list of all the sort of grants that have been, I think they're listed already in the timetable, a list of all the money that has come in and, or that is in the works or whatever. Anyway, I'll leave it right there on that. Those were three things that were just flashing through my mind, is kind of looking at this map. So I'll put that on the table, and then just open it up for other board members. I'll start with board members first, and then we can then I'll open up to the public. So yeah, board members, just jump in on any requests for information or questions or concerns. Anybody?
Yeah. This is Dave Pine.
Yeah, Dave, yes.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the overview, Margaret. You know, I think one thing that might help in the future here is, you know, if we kind of, maybe, if there's the right terminology, is to find, you know, reaches along this Safer Bay project. I mean, by count, there's really four, right? There's the, there's the yellow line up to Bay Road, there's from Bay Road to 84, and then it's from 84, I guess, all the way to Marsh?
I think there are actually more than that, and I think they're broken out and defined a little bit differently than they were originally. In the NOP, there is a list of reaches by name.
Right.
And I'm happy to send that around. We can, we can post that as part of our either post-board meeting report out or in a future meeting.
I guess I'm just trying to have some way that when we discuss this, you know, we can have, have names for proportions of the shoreline. When we talk about different agencies are going to have different roles, depending on what portion of the shoreline we're referring to, and it'd be helpful, we could refer to them by some names, you know?
Yep, we can do that.
That's right. Go ahead, go ahead.
That was one thing. And then I wanted to make sure I understood with the Brick Grant, what, what, what stretch does the Brick Grant cover?
It covers from the entrance to Bedwell Bayfront Park. I don't think it covers this part.
We kind of lost you, Margaret.
Oh, my apologies. It covers from the entrance to the park. It, this is high ground along here, so it covers along this, this stretch to the connection of Bayfront Expressway, along Bayfront Expressway, around Meta, along Highway 84, up to the PG&E substation and around, and up to the end where it it ends here at the Mosley Tract.
Okay. And that was submitted by the city of Menlo Park? Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's right.
And then turning to the Restoration Authority, could you go over, go over again, the two grants and what responsibilities they place on the on the Creek JPA?
Sure.
A little more slowly and a little, maybe a little more detail?
Sure. So round five of the SFBRE grants, we have a fully executed $1 million grant.
Right.
That, the, the function of that will result in SEQA evaluations, including the wetlands delineations that are required, biological conditions, and a full project description. It also enables engineering and technical evaluations that will culminate in up to a 10 to 30% design levels. We'll use information from that for specific evaluations around geotechnical needs, geomorphic marsh evolution. That means are the marshes gaining sediment or are they eroding? And how do we have to adjust the project depending on the results of that information? We're going to be looking at how to create high-tide refuge habitat, particularly in the southern stretch along the Faber Tract Marsh along here. There is very little opportunity in the southern area of East Palo Alto's Safer Bay project to create ecotone levees, which is something like what's suggested here around the PG&E substation. So we're looking at what kind of adaptations, what kind of resiliency structures can be built into the Faber Tract Marsh, which is a very high-value marsh that provides high-tide refuge if we can't have a really good bridge between the marsh and the upland area, because it's all developed along here, and there's no place for the critters to go upland. So what, what would it look like to build upland? And it would, it would also, I'm sorry, it would also cover community outreach using our two existing community outreach contractors through community climate resilient communities in New West Jacasa, and educational outreach through our community partner, Grassroots Ecology. So that's the first part. Round six, the next.
Can I ask this a quick question there?
Yes, sir.
So it it envisions doing this work along the entire Safer Bay short, you know?
Yes, because it's, yes, because it supports the programmatic level SEQA that we are doing for the entire set of reaches.
Okay. All right, so all the, all the reaches, okay.
Yes, and with the second round of, of, of funding provisionally, we would complete SEQA and permitting, and get us up to 90% designs for project-level components. That's that, the yellow striped area down in the bottom right, and 15 to 60% designs for other reaches. And of course, continue our community outreach and engagement.
Okay, so the second grant, which is much more substantial, would involve a lot of design work again across all the reaches?
Yes, that's right, sir.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the, thanks for that information.
Okay, I think Pat, yeah, go ahead and jump in, and we can make a couple of rounds if you want, yeah.
Well, and I'm, I'm actually anxious to hear from members of the public, too.
Oh, yes, we definitely will hear from the public.
But I might have more comments after that. So Margaret, can you review for us, or maybe there are actually others who can speak to this even more? So in San Mateo County, from, I guess it's really Atherton Creek, is where the One Shoreline project takes over from there northbound?
It would be what you see on your screen as this dashed purple area. We are, at this time, we are envisioning that this dashed purple area and perhaps this, the, the yellow curve here at the entrance would be picked up by One Shoreline, because although this is part of the Brick Grant, this is also connected. And I know that, and I don't want to speak for Len, and if he's on, or if somebody from, maybe Dave knows more.
Yeah, Len, Len is on, I think, yeah.
Okay, this is anticipated, this area at Bedwell Bayfront Park is anticipated to be included in yet another Brick application that, that I know Len is contemplating.
Yeah, and so what I want to just wade into is kind of the, what, what agencies we have current responsibilities and, and how this should be structured? Structured in the future and maybe that this is a discussion for later in the agenda item. But or, or even at another meeting. But, you know, I, I understand that, well, first I'll say that from when this started coming up in twenty. Fourteen, fifteen, I think. We all certainly recognize the criticality of shoreline protection. It's got to happen and it's got to happen. As soon as possible. And then, you know, it emerged that in the south, on the south of the creek. We've had the city of Palo Alto and Valley Water. Working together on the projects there. And there had been a, I think, a hope that the San Mateo Flood Control Agency would have. A new ballot measure that would give it funding and, and capacity to. Take on additional stretches. That hasn't been able to happen yet. And so as this is ramping up, it's just going to be an important concern on. Figuring out how we have the Santa Clara County agencies that are. Paying for the flood control project south of the creek. To what extent do they have a role and responsibility north of the creek? And I say that with wanting to make sure that. The, the progress proceeds as fast as possible. So. How do we reconcile those objectives remains to be determined, but I. If anybody has any updates on. Kind of the, the, the future notion of how that would all be resolved, I'd certainly welcome them.
Well, Pat, you know, if I may, I just want to. I think this. You know, this issue of governance, I, I just call it that governance jurisdictions financing has been evolving. And I see that we're actually. In the process of getting to that point because I think right now everyone has their own ideas. And perhaps there's a lot of assumptions underlying this project. And I think that's where I see that we need to clarify. And even tonight so far, I feel like. You know, splitting things up into reaches, as David was saying. Figure out exactly what the responsibilities are under the current grants. So we know who is responsible for what. And then looking at. From now on, as it evolves more to, to do that. So, yeah, I definitely, I think we're. We're leading up to that, you know, in a way. And I'm just saying that because I, I don't think right now we have decided. So everybody's got their own ideas about it. But at some point, I think, as we've done in the past, the JPA has to. Figure out how, how we work together. And, you know, part of the complexity is. I think we all know that, but in my mind, not only. Are we, you know, in two counties, but now we're extending sort of further out into one of the counties more, and that's creating. I think definitely the need for that. But anyway, just wanted to add that. Yeah, thank you. So I think maybe.
I can just try to go real quickly. I do want to clarify that, like. Santa Clara County taxpayers aren't paying for any of these projects that have been. Outlined here except through their role as, as federal taxpayers for, for, for the federal money. The, the connection or the involvement, I think, comes through, just to be clear, what, what. Director Berg is saying, the involvement of the JPA and sort of programmatic management responsibilities. And that Santa Clara County taxpayers then contribute to the administration. Of, of the JPA and thereby have some. Some contribution as the JPA pays a, again, like I say, a programmatic management, but. No, again, like I say, Santa Clara County tax dollars are going fundamentally or substantively to the funding of these, of these projects. And just so, so we're clear about that.
Agreed. Thanks, Drew.
Yeah. Yeah, Drew, anything else you want on your mind that, you know, for a future. Study and, and sort of continuing this.
Nothing immediately comes to mind, but I, I definitely like, certainly eager to hear, hear, hear public comment on this, on this discussion.
Okay. All right. So then. Let me see if, any other. Comments from board members. Questions. Okay, so let me then open it up to the public. And so Miko, if you could. Tell us if anybody is asking to speak on this. And again, you know, we're. At this point, really trying to pick up questions, concerns that people have and. You know, we'll continue this, so.
So we do have a hand raised by Kate Kennedy, but we do also have a written comment that was sent in and we have a clarification. From our senior project manager, Tess Byler, who wanted to say that the entrance to Bedwell is not included in Menlo Park's theme of brick grant.
Okay.
Okay. Kate, did you want to speak? I see you removed your hand.
Go ahead and read the comment first.
Okay. So we have a comment from Pam D. Jones. Regarding this topic. And she has said, please include in your discussion. And direction to staff the relation to the, of the San Francisco Creek to the bay and sea level rise. It is particularly important for the SFC JPA to increase its commitment to the Safer Bay project. Failure to maintain and increase this commitment will jeopardize funding, causing significant delays. It is clear that we are experiencing sea level rise at a greater rate than anticipated. And will deeply affect the portion of Menlo Park closest to the bay, Bell Haven and Haven Avenue and East Palo Alto. It is also important to do outreach to the communities most affected by sea level rise, flooding and high rates. Of mandatory flood insurance. It is important in order to make decisions that will affect our communities. This is critical to better understand the communities in which you serve. This may also be the time to update the vision and mission statement to reflect the work ahead. Respectfully, Pam. D. Jones, resident, Menlo Park District One. Okay, Kate, did you want to go ahead and speak?
Yeah, just a, a quick question and then I have a, a comment, but we can save that if that's going to happen in a, a later portion. The, the question was just like, hey, Chair Briga, it sounds like you're, you're speaking about governance issues and it's kind of raising some flags for me. It sounds like the. The board is maybe questioning its commitment to the project a little bit. Is that, is that the case? Can we? Hear a little bit more about maybe what's, what's.
I, I, I can respond to that. I think all of us know that this is a very complex. Work that the JPA has been doing even up to us, never mind Safer Bay, just pretend we're, nothing's going to Safer Bay. I don't see any questioning of the work or the commitment. What I see and what I hear is a natural evolution. In any project that involves several jurisdictions that have different authorities. And in this case, we even have two big. Private governments, Meta and PG&E involved. And of course, we have the community that, you know, wants to see something done. That's all it is. I'm just trying to prepare. For the next phase, which is, as, as you have heard. From some people is, we do need to be very specific on who is responsible for what. And where is the money going to come from? You know, over the years, I've been, I'm still a critic of our government structure that leaves these kinds of projects. To every little community. So some people have more money, some have less money and like, you know. Protecting people should be, in my opinion, the job of the federal government, the state government, and then we can all work together, but. Ultimately, we have to work this on the ground. So to me, it's a process. And that's where we are. I don't see it as a. Problem or a questioning or anything like that. It's just the next step. That I think we're involved in trying to work this out. And we have to do it. In the public openly and I think that's what we're doing. So.
Thank you very much. It's very helpful.
And we have. Did you want to say something else, Chair President Briga?
No, no.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Stay out of it now, but just kind of.
I just, I just wanted to chime in very quickly. I, I do think it's important to point out as, as we talk about the, the, the JP's role in here. Role in, in these, these projects. No one is talking about an expansion of, of a resourcing or staffing of the JPA. Like, right, that, that has, that is not on the table. The JP has not expanded. As it has, as, as taking some role in these projects and, and there is no. Has been no talk from, it's like a director or any consideration by this body. Of, of the JPA as a staff needing to expand. And so I do think that that's important to point out. You, you know, because it's not a scenario where the involvement here is, 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 has, or anyone is expecting to lead for, again, like I say, on the JPA side, some, some increased. Resourcing or, or funding.
Next person, Miko, you want to, if you're keeping track of who's asking first, yeah.
Jeff, you are, okay, we have two Jeffs. Jeffs, I'm going to mess up your last name.
That's great. That is good. Hi, I'm, I'm Jeff Page. I'm with the Ravenswood Shores Business District. And we represent, our group represents a significant number of the property, industrial and commercial property owners that are. In the Safer Bay next phase project that's, that's being designed. I, I really want to appreciate the importance that the, the board of the JPA and the JPA itself has been put into this project. Obviously. You know, sea level rise is happening fast. And with the potential development activities that are. Going to be happening, hopefully in the Ravenswood. It's important to move these along quickly to have the coordination between the development of the levees. Concurrently as possible or prior, if possible, to the development of some of these projects. So this, this is, I, I want to. Thank you for the importance of the, the acknowledgement of the importance of this project and, and would appreciate the continued. Of moving this forward as rapidly as possible. Thank you.
Jeff Smith.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. I'm Resident of Menlo Park. I'm also an environmental quality commissioner. Appointed by the city, one of the new ones around April. So. Just a little context is a few of us who are new are. Obviously, learning and listening at different activities and events in the city. I was just hoping to give a little bit of community context because I was lucky enough to. Attend with Miriam and Violet and Tess, the recent outreach that was done with Safer Bay. And then we've been working on a couple of projects, but, but three things I really wanted to, to share. With Chair Briga and the team. One is. I, I feel like the community context for this project is just incredibly. Important. And Menlo Park's just released its environmental justice and safety reports, but. What I heard in a lot of these meetings that I'm attending in the Bell Haven and East Palo Alto communities is. People are really paying attention to the fact that. You know, across one oh one in Bell Haven, it's a very different environmental experience. Just across the freeway and. You know, not only is the flood insurance burden there, but they feel like their homes are going to be underwater. And I think Tess, when. She said that it was going to take, you know, ten years for this project to reduce the. The amount of flood insurance that residents pay, you could just hear the room deflate and the groan and. You know, people just feeling like it's going to be another decade. So. You know, it was just this, there's a willingness to engage, but there's a really heavy burden. From this project, but then also we're working on. An urban forest master plan project with some partners to do the canopy. We're actually following East Palo Alto's. Successful template to increase their canopy. And what we're learning there is, you know, air pollution is much. A much heavier burden and more people are dying of asthma in Bell Haven. And I'm sure East Palo Alto found the same thing in their results as they researched the, the canopy project for their neighborhood. So. And, and then I read a quote that Councilwoman Taylor made, which is. You know, just super revealing, you know, basically the life expectancy at Bell Haven. Because of this is seven years shorter than the rest of Menlo Park. So. You know, and, and that about fifty-one percent of people in that. Environment have asthma because of air pollution and the environmental quality. So. I, I think the reason I'm, I'm commenting tonight is I, I hope there's no movement to back away from this. I hope there's a movement to. Short out the governance and all the things that Chair Briga said because I think that community is paying attention to the increased. Impacts and the, the lack of just overall environmental justice that's been maybe a little bit of a legacy for that community. And I, I really wanted to ground it back. I hope there are other members from that community that are here on the phone, but I wanted to just breathe a little life into some of these comments because it is a very real. A very real thing being felt by those families in that community. So. Thank you for giving me a platform to speak.
Dave Halsing.
Okay, thank you, Chair Briga and board. Thank you for, can we just a quick moment here to speak? I'm Dave Halsing. I. Manage the South Bay Salt Pond Restoration Project, doing that work. On, on this map, you see it right here on the National Wildlife Refuge here, those ponds that are all labeled with R three, R four, SF two, all those. I just wanted to, you know, voice support for the project, Safer Bay as a whole. We certainly have some, you know, some concerns and some questions about some of the different alignments and some of the design choices, some of the restoration. Options that the JPA faces moving this forward, but. You know, the JPA staff and its consultant team has been very supportive and very collaborative in working with us to. Help understand those and help address those and help sort of. Interweave the, the, the needs of the Safer Bay project, the needs of the restoration project. And make sure that there's a synergy rather than some conflicts there. So. You know, I just wanted to sort of take this opportunity to, you know, encourage you to, to keep moving forward on this. And, and, you know, keep the, keep the progress going. The section of the San Mateo County coast, I grew up not far from there. And live there all through my, my teens and twenties and thirties. It's, it really does need this flood protection, as you know, so. Just, just a voice for that. I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you so much.
So you used to watch all the salt, the salt. Ponds, right? The salt industry.
Well, you know, I, I, I certainly have seen the salt come out of the ground over on the Newark side. I think when I lived over here, I don't think I realized what was going on there. That was. I was kind of a kid, but thank you.
Okay. All right. Now we'll continue. Miko, anybody else?
Yes, Kate.
Hi, yes, just wanted to give my comment now. Hello, everyone. Chairman Abrika, members of the board, thank you very much for taking the time to study this issue today. My name is Kate Kennedy. I'm a program manager and community organizer with Climate Resilient Communities, and we work primarily with the frontline neighborhoods of. Bell Haven and Menlo Park and also in East Palo Alto as well as North Fair Oaks. And I appreciated Chair Abrika's response to my, to my question. I think. He's exactly right in saying that this, this project has gone from. An idea, now we're approaching implementation. And so it's time to figure out. How all the pieces that used to fit together, fit together in that new context. And I think that the best path forward is, is sticking with. The JPA's administration of this project. I think that moving. This project to another organization or another government body would result in a lot of the ways. And we've heard from, from Jeff and also. I was present, we had a, a meeting at Boys and Girls Club in East Palo Alto. On December seventh, where we brought together folks from both Bell Haven and East Palo Alto, about thirty folks to sit and learn about the Safer Bay project and about how they can be involved. And people there were, were very adamant, again, about the, the speed at which the project takes place, right? Folks in East Palo Alto remember really well. The, the big flooding event from ninety-eight. People also know that there's, there's more on the horizon. And folks are, folks are concerned that. that they're already, you know, feeling the burdens. They're already forced to pay, you know, mandatory flood insurance, right? And that only applies to you if you if you own your home with with a mortgage that's outstanding. So for folks who who own their homes free and clear, they're oftentimes not buying that flood insurance, which can be really disastrous if if something were were to occur. Um and that, you know, that that results in a risk of of displacement. I think people don't wanna, you know, we wanna keep our keep our communities together, keep our our neighbors and all of our residents housed and sheltered. Um so I think this is really a top priority for these two communities and making sure that this project moves as smoothly as possible and as quickly as possible, given the constraints of of the environment and the complexities and everything like that. I think that our focus should be trying to move this project as as quickly forward. And I think that transferring responsibility to this project, whether it's for the implementation phase, um I think would would be would would slow things down a lot. And I don't think that's in the best interest of of the communities. And I don't think that's what what residents have have expressed in a multitude of different settings. Um I think that the other point I'd like to make is that the whole point of of the JPA coming together was to address these sort of issues at at the watershed level, right? And the bay is not distinct from the watershed. It doesn't stop being the watershed when it turns into the bay. They're one and the same, right? Where both where the water moves from the land into the bay, into the ocean, that interchange, I think that that's all the watershed, and we should be approaching these problems from the watershed level. Um I think that the complexity of the project is one that is is definitely, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces. There's a lot of communities and there's a lot of uh the stakes are really high in this project. So I think that, you know, we we you uh um Board Member Combs said that there's no expansion of the GPA JPA on the table. I think that if there is you know, sufficient need and if it's going to move the project forward quickly, that that is something that should be on the table. Um thank you all for your time and and your attention and your willingness to study this issue and to hear from the community.
Cecilia Taylor.
Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. Um I really appreciate this um being on the agenda. And I appreciate Ms. Bruce of the the presentation of where we are with this project um and explaining it in a way um where anyone can understand the different complexities of the project. I am Cecilia Taylor. I'm on the Mellow Park City Council. I represent District One, which is the Bell Haven Neighborhood and Haven Avenue, um which are both communities are impacted um by flooding and sea level rise. I am am very, 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 very grateful just to hear all of the leadership on this call from community members um from organizations and also from our elected officials. Um and also, we have Lynn Maderman on the call as well from One Shoreline. Um I I just want to encourage um the board to continue the work on Safer Bay, update the mission and the vision um and keep moving forward. And whatever I can do to be supportive of that, um just ask. Thank you.
Lisa Gochet.
Hello, I'm Lisa Gochet. I have the the think pleasure of being an alternate to this JPA, and I sit on One Shoreline as well. Um current city council member or mayor in East Palo Alto. Like, you know, um Ruben, as you move forward or as the the board moves forward, it's gonna be important to me to understand how the public-private partnership is gonna work with all of this work. We know that there are business and development that's coming up. Who's gonna be responsible? How are they weighing in? And how are we working together to make sure that their projects match the needs that we have for this shoreline work? I'm looking at the PGA sub uh PG&E substation, where are they leaning in to help? As well as Facebook Meta and their property that has to be protected as well. So in future conversations, how do those partnerships look? And how are we gonna move this project forward with their help?
Great, great. Miko, anybody else? Do we see anyone else?
I have no more comments and I see no more hands raised at this time.
So you you know, I would say um I'm sure our director or has been taking uh notes and we can always you know, listen to this again, but I think at this point, um this is what we wanted to do today was one, get a quick overview of what the project is, but uh just as important, perhaps more important for this next phase is to outline some of those concerns and issues that will, the JPA will uh, you know, be addressing in the coming months. So um yeah, so we'll follow up and, you know, there'll be another point in time in the spring when uh I think we'll delve into this issue uh further just to continue uh to to move forward. I I I definitely feel that everyone on the board of the JPA is uh and people have so stated, I think, we're we're definitely interested in moving this forward. And I'll just make a side comment, you know. Unfortunately, some of these projects do take a long time because they're very expensive. Uh there's not dedicated money, as I mentioned earlier, and but I I do wanna remind all of us of the successful completion of Reach One on the creek, which actually took us twenty years. But I'll never forget the time when, uh I think Lisa remembers, some of our community members coming to us two, three years ago. Uh without even being solicited on their own, they came and told us, this is the first year that we feel safe from flooding. Now, there's a lot of other issues involved, but you know, we'll we'll keep chugging along, do the best we can to keep going. And uh actually, I see Dave and 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 Drew uh, you know, Mr. Combs also raising their hands. But Dave, you wanted to say something else or add?
Um sure. No, I I guess, you know, today is kind of a little bit of a fact-finding uh session, so I thought it might be helpful for my colleagues and for the public to just to hear a little bit more about, you know, One Shoreline, its status, its fishing, its capacity. So, you know, we're we're very excited about One Shoreline, which was formed to address flooding, sea level rise and coastal erosion along the entire San Mateo coast, uh uh on the entire San Mateo coast and the San Mateo Bay shore, so the Pacific and the bay. And, you know, our name is One Shoreline because, you know, we know all these projects are inter- ultimately have to integrate. And, you know, we need to work work together across jurisdictions to solve them. But it doesn't mean that One Shoreline is doing all the projects, you know, you know, two examples that are, you know, very prominent. You know, the San Francisco Airport has a massive uh project under uh in in the secret secret process to protect its assets. And as folks know, Foster City on a very expedited basis uh is construction constructing levees to stay to keep its community out of the FEMA flood zone in the city of Foster City. So we um, you know, consult with them and 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 try to add value where we can there, but we're not the, you know, project leads by any stretch of the imagination. Now, right now, One Shoreline is very modest in its capacity and its in its financial resources. Um we inherited from the county uh something called the San Mateo County Flood Control District, which collects taxes in certain in in very limited parts of the county. Most of the money is generated from the Colma Creek Zone up in the north part of the county. And 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 money is generated from Colma Creek after the use on Colma Creek. So all that stuff that we inherited, there's, you know, r- really no revenue um of any of any significance um that's dedicated to the San Francisco Creek. Actually, I'll correct myself. There is a San Francisco Creek flood zone where we collect a teeny, teeny, teeny bit of property tax and virtually all that money goes to paying our dues um sort of speak, paying our 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 membership in the San Francisco Creek JPA. But we don't have any other resources um to bring to bear. Um, you know, when you boil it all down, uh if you put aside the historic San Mateo County Flood Control District, we have a budget of about a million and a half dollars and we have four people. So we know that that is a a small fraction of what it will ultimately take to meet our mission of providing shoreline protection across all of San Mateo County. So with that deficit in mind, we worked very hard to explore going to the public with a parcel tax. It was gonna be a combined flood control and fire mitigation parcel tax, but it just wasn't the right time to do that, given um that uh inflation in the and we're we're coming off of COVID or still in COVID. So for the foreseeable future, our our resources are are very limited. I, you know, I am confident and I don't know how long it's gonna take. It's 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 gonna take a long time, probably, you know, that we will have, you know, substantial uh capability. Um and would be in a position to, you know, take on a project like the the Safer Safer Bay. But in the foreseeable future, that's just not not the reality. Um that's not to say that we won't be a great partner with Safer Bay and contribute in every way we can. But um beyond that that stretch north of Marsh Road, you know, we just unfortunately have, don't have a capacity to kind of take it, you know, for lack of a better word, take this over. Um so anyway, I just wanted to provide that context. I don't know if Lynn Maderman wants to add or correct anything I said. Um because I think it's important for everybody on the board and for the public to understand kind of the state of the state of One Shoreline, what, you know, and what we're able to do in this particular area. Lynn, do you want to add anything?
I'm sure. I'd be glad to. Thank you very much. Um the only thing I would I would add, that was a great summary. Uh the only thing I would add is when we do projects and we we have constructed a project at Bayfront Canal, and that was mentioned earlier, I think, in the in terms of Atherton Channel, and that that's right, that right there. And that project was um funded by the cities and the county and the state. And so we did put together funding agreements like the JPA has done for the construction of its projects and for the planning and design of its projects. Um so so in lieu of a of a parcel tax or other kind of substantive substantial uh funding mechanism, um we will still be doing projects and and those would be funded by um by coalitions. And in the area of the yellow dash line along the entrance to Bedwell Bayfront Park and the purple line, uh we are looking at uh One Shoreline taking the lead for planning and design of that piece of it. Um and so I think that's when Dave Pine mentioned earlier, there are kind of four, uh let's say, core reaches. I think i- if you if you think about those those four reaches, and I and I use the term reaches um to mean broader than what we're seeing here with different colors, there's there's a piece that One Shoreline we think could take the lead on, and that's north of of Bedwell Bayfront Park Northwest, if you will. Uh the other one being from Bedwell to the Dumbarton essentially. And then the third one being from that point to Bay Road and then a fourth one being from Bay Road. Uh and so even though those aren't labeled here as reaches, if you think in terms of governance, as Director Abrika was mentioning, there are kind of four fundamental areas that may have different governance. It doesn't mean that the the project slows down just because we acknowledge that those areas have different potential uh management for construction. It means that we all have to work together. And I think what's important is that the JPA provides the umbrella for all four of those areas through its programmatic EIR that's going on right now. And it's very important that that moves forward so that each of those four discrete areas can be enabled to do projects down the road. Um so when I was hearing this conversation and any concerns about slowing down, I'm not really hearing that. Um I think it's important to just understand the complexity of the governance and to think about the importance of a programmatic EIR as an umbrella for all of those efforts to go forward. Perhaps a big piece under Mellow Park's leadership, a big piece under One Shoreline leadership, a big piece under JPA leadership. And I think that all can be discussed and and sorted out in the future, as Director Abrika was mentioning, maybe in the spring, we have the next phase of this conversation. Um so thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And I think Director Combs, you had uh.
Yeah, thank you, uh Director Abrika. So I I'm I'm totally in in support of this idea of of, you know, at some later date, us us, you know, sort of really getting into the details about like sort of what the governance uh looks like. But but I do think we have to recognize that we've gotten to this point because there has been a great deal of of concern in the community about the JP's role uh as it relates to the shoreline, you know, based on statements that have come um from members of the board that have questioned this role. Um and so I do think that it is worth uh the board taking some um step at this moment and in reiterating its support or its willingness to be involved um in in these projects, given that and to one degree, it has accepted funding already in connection with these projects. I I do think that that statement would provide a lot of clarity. Um and and I I do think that that um i- i- a lot of clarity and a lot of concern in the community, again, like I say, based on what has been said um at at some of these board meetings that have questioned um the JP's involvement uh i- i- in any way when it comes to to shoreline work. And and so I do think I have to say, from my perspective, it would be a disappointment if we just sort of had this discussion tabled it and and that that there was no clear um in in definitive commitment of at least the JPA remaining involved going forward.
Yes. No, and so definitely, if you notice, uh or, you know, everybody on on our agenda on this item, uh precisely what you're saying is included so that it was a combination of studying up a little more, sorting out some of the issues to be continued, but at the same time, giving direction, because basically uh, you know, our staff continues to work on these uh uh on on this project. And so uh, you know, I did consult with our uh 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 council to uh you know, to handle this in a way that we can speak, uh each of us as board members and give direction that we want to continue with Safer Bay project, that we are in it and we're continuing with it. Now, some of the specifics, uh, you know, later on can be worked out, but um I I'm in agreement with that. And that's why sort of the agenda reflects that. And so, you know, I I I can start it by saying that uh I'm I'm reaffirming my commitment. I think the JPA should continue uh and not abandon this project at all. So I'll ask each of you to state uh make any comments. Uh I think Director Combs, I'm sure, you know, because you raised the issue last time, and I definitely heard that loud and clear. So maybe you, for the record, just officially, you wanna say your your position on this and then we can go around, so.
Yeah, I I do want to say I very much um uh respect s- some of the concerns that have been raised by um by Director Byrd and 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 certainly um uh former Director Crim. I I do think that they're valid and they're worth exploring and looking into. Um I I do think that that the JPA has a role to play uh when it comes to the shoreline. Uh some role to play when it comes to the shoreline uh projects. And and I'm I'm more than willing and supportive of engaging um in in that in that discussion. But uh to to your point, uh Director Abrika, yes, I I am, I am, I am supportive. But also want to say that, like, I do respect um the valid concerns of of my colleagues and and um and 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 want to make sure that that we we hear and and understand that and and have some path forward that that we all can be be supportive of.
Excellent. Okay. Uh anybody else or other members of the of the board, please?
Well, I could go ahead and weigh in.
Yes, go ahead.
Um so just um really reiterating what I had said before, uh I've been supportive of the JPA filling a gap on this uh ever since it came up in twenty fifteen, I think. Um and it was really because there was no other agency that could step forward and begin this process um uh to uh to get to where we are right now. Um and uh we we clearly don't have a um uh the the One Shoreline Agency that is uh in a situation where they can step in at this point in time. Uh the project needs to proceed and um I am uh continue to be a supportive of uh this agency being the lead uh uh continuing to be the lead at this time. And the prospect of the agency being the long-term lead lead on this. Um but we have to resolve the issues that that Director Abrika had really alluded to. It's true that we haven't added staff to do this, but it's also true that um uh there are staff resources going in to this work. Um and uh at a certain point in time, if if we really have that become substantial, we have to figure out how we're going to uh manage that because uh everybody needs to understand that Santa Clara County, the JPA is not managing an elite agency there. It would, it's um other agencies who have taken it on. And this is a joint. And this is a joint, this is San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Power Authority. It's not the San Mateo County Shoreline Joint Power Authority. Uh, so this is clearly stretching the boundaries of the original purposes of the authority. Uh, but it's, it's extremely important. Um, uh, project and um, and I want to see it proceed as rapidly as possible. But we all need to be objective and including members of the public who have spoken. Uh, uh, who have kind of had this implication that of course this is the responsibility of, of the S F C JPA. And that's not really true. Uh, it is a stretch that we are, have agreed to. Um, because there was no other agency to fill this gap. And uh, and that continues to be the case. And for me, the, the urgency and necessity of the project. At this point in time outweighs um, what I think are still very modest staff resources that we're having to expend. And we just have to sort this out in the future. And, and um, and I think everybody has to recognize objectively. That it's an issue. Uh, and let's, let's keep the ball rolling and in parallel with uh working through the governance.
Okay. Thank you. Um.
David. Sure. So I, I appreciate uh Drew's, Drew's and Pat's, Pat's comments. Um, I think that the Creek JPA is, you know, the best entity, if really not the only entity. That currently, you know, moves safer forward in its, in its kind of totality. You know, when we think of working on a programmatic. Um, E I R, um, you know, it would have to be in, as it is now. The Creek, Creek JPA. So, you know, I think it's important that we maintain the, maintain our, our mo- motives operating here. Know the issue of the. You know, the, the, the cost that we're talking about is, is, is the portion of staff time that is applied against the Safer Bay project. And I think the, the concern of Santa Clara is, is, is strongest as you, as you move further away. From the um creek itself. But in the, you know, in the areas, you know, uh, you know, particularly the yellow area up to Bay Road. You know, there was a determination made by this board, actually before I joined, that the Creek JPA really felt it was important to. Remove homes that were subject to uh, you know, really overlapping flooding between the. Both the creek and the, and, and the, in the bay, uh, bay flooding. So, you know, in, in, in that regard, um. When we spend operating dollars or staff time on that, I, I think it's in accord with that direction. And throughout the history of the San Francisco Creek JPA. You know, we have done the right thing in that we haven't really tried to allocate operating costs, like for example. The Beta One O One project, I don't believe benefited Menlo Park. But they, you know, dutifully pay all their operating fees, you know, for that period of time. So. The question of, of the operating costs are, you know, it's valid and needs to be brought to ground and. But we have to keep in mind that it is a, it is a JPA where we, we're trying to do some, trying to do some things collectively. I, you know, some, some parts of Safer Bay are, you know. Quite like I said earlier, quite a way, quite a far away, away from the creek. And I can see the concern. Uh, I think the concern is more valid uh there. Thank you.
Okay. So uh, Dave, just to, I, I, I take that as uh, let's continue working on this.
Yes, yes, yes.
Right. Uh. Yeah, Director Shwe, I know you're just coming in as a representative of the Santa Clara Water District, but do you have any comments or any observations at this point?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, uh, I'm uh here today uh as the alternate uh for Director Crim. And uh, but oh, my view on uh the discussion today is that uh as the um. Uh, representative of for Santa Clara Valley Water District. I'm here to uh represent e- e- even, even I'm the representative, not the alternate uh, here to um. Um, represent the entire water district. Uh, so uh, this is definitely something I think uh on our end. We need to bring back how to our full board for discussion and then uh get direction from the full board and from there. So thank, yeah, thank you for hearing my comment.
No, no, thank you. Appreciate your uh, observation and comment. So um. Okay, well, I think just directing this to, you know, our director and to everyone who joined us, uh. The JPA is not going anywhere. We're continuing with this project. We do need to address certain issues and concerns later, but we're definitely on board and um, I think we're all committed to. Uh. Uh, doing the best we can to protect uh people and businesses, properties and the environment, doing all of that. So, okay. So I think we um, we've concluded uh this item and um, you know, we'll follow up, I think perhaps uh. At, at least after this um. Sometime before this comes up or before next meeting. Uh, perhaps we can caucus a little bit with uh. Uh, Chair and Vice Chair Combs and the Director, I think to, to put together information in a way that can be. Uh. Uh, you know, useful for the next coming up discussions. But anyway. Other than that, I think we're, we're good with this. So our next item number seven is a couple of action items. And so I'll um. You know, I'll start with the first one. Uh, and this is a resolution recognizing and appreciating our. Uh, Director Gray Cremon's service to the uh, to the JPA. And so um, I'll ask our Director Margaret to do a quick, quick reading of the proclamation and then I'll open it up for. Comments and then we'll continue with the other one there. So.
Great. Thank you. So um, as everyone knows, Director Cremon's service to the Joint Powers Authority has come to an end. But we don't want to leave him uncongratulated. Therefore, we commend him with the following resolution. Whereas Gary Cremon has served on the board of the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority since January of twenty fourteen and. Whereas Gary provided political support and advocacy that enabled the completion of the Critical Reach One project. Protecting the cities of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto and. Whereas Gary consistently advocated passionately and clearly for the needs of Palo Alto residents. And all community members, particularly those who have been underrepresented or historically disenfranchised and. Whereas Gary catalyzed the evaluation and update of the way the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority. Managed its web-based early flood warning community text alert system, ensuring that the JPA's practices and systems coordinated well with current county-wide alert systems and. Whereas Gary encouraged frank and meaningful dialogue with our watershed partner, Stanford University. To ensure projects in the watershed were well coordinated. And whereas. Gary has kept the well-being of the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority and its staff in mind. Through discussions and decisions regarding changes to the members and members' agreement, contracts, budgets, internal policies and procedures. Staff safety and help to ensure the S F C JPA is on solid footing and. Whereas Gary's high level of engagement and practical insights have enabled him to be a strong and uniquely effective advocate for the interests. Of all inhabitants of the San Francisco Kito Creek watershed. We, the board members and staff of the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority. Do now resolve to thank and to recognize Director Gary Cremon for his exemplary service to the San Francisco Kito Creek Joint Powers Authority. On behalf of the cities of Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, Palo Alto, and the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. And the Santa Clara Valley Water District, it is now introduced and passed as follows.
Um, so at this point, I'll open it up to board members for any comments. And I do see Gary there. So we'll also ask him to say something once we. Go through some comments, but anybody on the board want to? Say anything, any comments? Yeah, just jump in. Uh, I think I see Pat, so I think.
Yeah, and, and I'd be glad to wait until after any members of the public who wish to speak. Uh, so I don't know what order you'd like to go in it, Chair.
Uh. Okay, you know, I'll take that. Let, let's uh start with the public and then we'll wrap up with board members and then Gary can. Say a few words here. So um, yeah, Miko, any requests that you see this point? I.
I have not received any requests to speak. Would any member of the public like to speak on Agenda Item Seven A? Recognition and appreciation for Director Gary Cremon's service to the JPA.
I know I said we were gonna go first and so that probably, yeah, Len, Len, I think.
Yeah, sorry, my raise hand function isn't functioning, but um, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to. Um, I thought that re- resolution that you read, Margaret, was well done. Um, and in regards to the Stanford University uh section of it. The two words that were used, I think, were frank and meaningful. And those are great words to describe. Uh, Gary's uh contributions to JPA over many years. Um, he. It, I think it's fair to say that the Beta Highway One O One project. Um, w- would have taken a lot longer and maybe not even gotten done if it weren't for Gary pushing uh to get that done. And I think in large part because he understood the value to East Palo Alto. So just, that's all I want to say. Quick uh thanks to Gary for all of his uh service at the JPA. I enjoyed working with him and learned a lot. And all of us are better, better off for his uh leadership.
Thank you. Uh. Miko, do you see anybody else at this point?
I do not see any other requests to speak.
Well, so we'll, we'll go with the board and if somebody else shows up, you know, we'll recognize them before that. So. Um. Any other? Oh, so Pat, well, back to you because you raised your hand. So go ahead.
Thank you. Um, well, I really want to echo uh Len's comments um, uh, as well as, as support. Um, really the body of that resolution. Uh, Gary has been exceptionally committed. Uh, immersed himself in the technical issues um, and, and uh has. Uh, done a great service to um, uh, to this agency. Uh, as, as Len stated, uh, he was uh critical to really assuring that the, the. Uh, one-on-one to the base section was completed and, and pushed as a priority. Most of all because of the significant threat. To life and safety of the residents, so many of the residents of East Palo Alto. And that that was uh, a high priority of this organization. It's, it's something that we accomplished and um. As uh Director uh Brika, I think was mentioning, you know, we have a partner at, at Menlo Park who uh that uh. Like most of Palo Alto has not yet been able to receive the flood protection that. We are yet working on, but we all recognize the criticality of what we did. Um, and then uh really Gary's uh willingness to, to take on directly issues and. Uh, whether it was helping to push Stanford's engagement or um, other related issues. I, I think that um. Uh, this agency is really, and our, and our residents have really benefited from his contributions. Thank you.
Nobody, I think Da- David, you had your hand up or?
Sure.
Yeah, go on.
So Gary, it's been a complete pleasure serving with you on the JPA Board. I've uh, you know, so enjoyed attending the meetings uh along with you. You bring such a unique set of assets to public service that you just don't see every day and that we're gonna miss on the JPA. We're gonna miss on Valley Water. We're gonna miss in the policy discussions in general and hope you find your way back into them. I mean, your entrepreneurial background and nature is, you know, so helpful with policymaking, your focus on innovation. Your willingness to question the status quo and as folks have pointed out, to be frank and direct about that. I mean, those are all attributes that uh, really can change public policy uh in, 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 in important ways. And then uh not to uh, leave out, you're just a fun guy to work with and we're just gonna miss uh, miss you in the. In the, in, in the, you know, the good spirit you bring to the, to your work. And I'll finally just close with echoing the prior remarks that you uh, you really made it happen on Beta One O One. You know, no one can pronounce San Francisc- San Francisco Kito Creek, so we should probably name the creek after you, but uh. That may be beyond our authority. So Gary, thank you very much and I look forward to our upcoming hike.
Okay, all right. Thing I drew, I think you're in.
Yeah, thanks. And, and again, like echoing all, all that um, uh, everyone else has said. When I joined the JPA four years ago. Had Gary was, was the chair and I remember that first meeting in the, the council chambers. Um, and, and you were like uh no chair I had ever seen in my life. Um, and uh, and, and it was, it had a lot to do with, with your, your, your candor. Your, your insight and, and your willingness to sort of uh in, in many respects, break down that sort of barrier that it can exist between um. Between the, the, the seats, uh, the audience and, and, and the dais. And I, I, I very much appreciate it. I, I would like to think in some, to some degree, I also uh learned from and, and have, have emu- emulated it at, at times. And so I, I just wanna um, you know, reiterate it as it has truly been a, a pleasure. Uh, serving uh with you on this board for the past uh four years. And, and I, I think like. Uh, Director Pine has said, I, I think we need, we need more people that approach. Um, uh, uh, the, the approach, our, our issues and our problems in public service. I, I think the way that you, you, you approached them. Um, which was not um, n- not wasting too much time with, with the niceties. Um, but we're focusing on, on what, what, what are we doing here? What's the impact and how, how do we make lives? Uh, uh, the lives of the people we, we say we're serving better. And, and I think that that was, that was never um, never in doubt in, in, in everything you did. And so, and I, I wish you. Um, all, all the best and all of your, your future endeavors and, and like has been stated, I, I hope that. Um, uh, that uh, it finds you back in public service in some way in, in the future.
Okay. Uh, well, let me, you know, add a few things to what's already been said, but I uh, definitely appreciated uh. Gary, your, your uh. Uh. Well, you know, I would say uh, that the role that you played from my perspective, representing East Palo Alto and, and having raised from the beginning at, on the JPA. You know, many of the issues that we're dealing with now, we, we, we're at the bottom of the, of the, of the watershed. So, you know, very vulnerable. Uh, from the beginning, we knew we were vulnerable from coastal flooding, as it was called then. I guess it's still sea level rise, but. It, I saw you as a me, kind of as a mediator. Uh, and very open, uh, because you after all were, you, you can speak for the entire Santa Clara County, you know, Water District, but. Uh, and, but you mediated pushing, I think, pushing the district to be. As proactive as possible, helping to. Pull. Carry that Reach One project from the bay to One O One. And then you also pushed us as a JPA because I think that's what it took. It took uh, it took us um. Some, some of that pushing at, at both ends. So, so, and you did it, you know, as people have said in a way, kind of in a. Uh, in a very serious, frank way, but also in a fun way, kind of like, hey, we can get this done. Let's get it done, you know? And uh, and, and kind of that, that spirit really helps because we, we do know how, how complicated these things can be. So. And, and I'm flashing back a little bit to that great moment, I think, for past and present and future. You know, board members or people working on these projects is that when we had the ground, the. Not the groundbreaking, but the actual completion of the, of the first reach and all the people that were there and. You know, the friendship bridge had been extended and that was just a great symbolic uh, as well as real. Um, example of the kind of work that we've done collectively. But you know, you definitely uh played a great role, I would say, uh. Uh, representing the district, your district, but also us. So, thank you very much and uh. Um. Ask you to say a few words now, share a few words with us about.
Sure. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Well.
Well, you know, Chair and Board Members, thank you for this honor. I am honored. You know, I've told some people kind of that I've I've won by losing, but that's on net. One of the things, though, that is a little bit of a loss is to leave all of you, you know, starting with the amazing staff that we have, you know, Len and Tass and Kevin, Miyoko. Awesome. You know, this is one of the finest agencies, it seems to me, in the Bay Area. And, you know, Santa Clara Valley Water District, we, we sit on other JPAs. We should be proud of this agency. But not just that, we should be proud of our community members that come to our meetings that are passionate. Um, and are protecting them. I mean, I see this to me is an agency for social justice, getting that Reach One uh Beta One-on-One done. There is nothing that affected me more that seeing the pictures of folks, what happened in the floods in East Palo Alto. Um, folks, you know, having to be on top of their cars and their property, living in apartments or houses, whatever, ruin their life savings. Or the folks in Palo Alto who didn't have insurance, maybe because they inherited their house or their basement and they just weren't prepared or what happened on One-on-One. So we're, this agency is doing God's work and to be part of it makes me feel good. Um, and great board members over the years, um, some of them who are here that I've learned tons from. Um, you know, Valley Water, we do three things. Safe, clean drinking water, the, oh, the two million people and flood control. And creek work or ecosystem work. But when I come in every day and when I'm making votes and policy, my, one thing in my mind is always, is this gonna advance the San Prescott Creek project? You know, when I'm gonna do something that might upset a colleague, I think in my mind, oh, I hope they're not gonna try to do something funding to the project that I think is the most important thing in District Seven that I used to represent. Um, you know, sometimes our board gets kind of, sometimes San Jose focused and loses touch that there are social justice issues in other parts of uh the county and in other areas. So I hope in the future, and it's, it's been tough because, you know, we can't use our water rates for this and we've had to go to ballot measures. Um, but I, I really also want to thank our board for actually seeing some of the social justice and the importance of getting this project as we move upstream done. And it's super important that we keep this before the Valley Water Board, the importance of this since things have changed and keep adequate funding and adequate staff time. Because it, as we all know, we're all here to make this critical um, to residents, whether they be in East Palo Alto, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, or as if if things are broadened out in other areas. So I've been honored to serve. Um, and I am looking forward to sitting around and eating bonbons and drinking scotch uh by myself all day. So again, thank you potentially for the honor if the board approves it and I stand open to shut up.
Yeah, no, thank you for those reflections and advice. Thank you. Um, if there are no other requests to speak, then uh, uh, I will, you know, call for a motion to adopt this resolution.
I have no more requests to speak.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
All right, move on second. Um.
Can I add one more thing if that's okay?
Yes, yes, quick. Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I forgot one of our, you know, after Mr. Matterman left, I forgot like our biggest one of our biggest accomplishments other than fixing One-on-One, but it's actually the one in my mind the most is getting Margaret Bruce. Former Valley Water employee who is gonna drive this project to heights unknown. Um, so I want to be sure she is acknowledged and her hiring is um one of the best things that we've done and I can see that uh she's totally ready to take this to the next level and battle all the things ahead. And I'm shutting up. So, go.
No, so we, we got a motion and a second, so we'll do roll call and.
Director Abrika?
Yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Burt?
Yes.
Director Shway?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you and congratulations for your service. Okay, our next item is another resolution and I'll um ask our director to tell us what this one is about. It's a
Sure, thank you, Director. Um, this, this is a resolution authorizing me as executive to director to negotiate with and to sign Task Order Number Four with our contractor HDR. As you will recall, we have a master services agreement with HDR. HDR and the team that also is subcontracted with them provide critical support for the Safer Bay Sequo work. The team assembled under HDR will be moving forward with implementation of that one million dollar grant that I mentioned in our previous study session item. Task Order Four rearranges some of the funding that remains from previous in and incomplete Task Order Three and moves it forward to and conforms with the scope of work necessary to complete the grant as authorized by the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. So this would enable me to negotiate the final details with HDR for an amount not to exceed the quantity of funding we have available residual from previous Department of Water Resources grant and the uh upcoming uh Measure AA grant from the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority.
Any questions now? Comments on this? There's no request from the public. Either then I can entertain motion for this item. I move. Second, second, yeah, roll call.
Director Abrika?
Uh, yes.
Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Burt?
Yes.
Director Shway?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Okay, well, uh, our next item is uh, well, several, several information items and uh first one is an update on the Brown Act and COVID state of emergency. So I think uh, Trish, or Margaret, both of you.
This is, this is Tricia's.
Oh, Tricia.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I'll keep this brief because I included in your agenda packet a more detailed discussion, but we just thought it would be appropriate to give you an update about the status of the COVID emergency as well as the Brown Act rules. So as you all know, that since COVID started, we've been meeting under relaxed Brown Act rules um, in this remote format. First, it was under a governor's executive order and then it was under legislation AB three sixty-one. Which will be sunsetting at the end of next year, but in any event, in order to meet under the relaxed provisions in AB three sixty-one, there needs to be a governor-declared state of emergency. And the governor has announced plans to lift that state of emergency at the end of February in twenty twenty-three. And at the time that he does that, we will no longer be able to make the findings necessary under AB three sixty-one. And we'd have to return to traditional Brown Act rules. And just as a quick reminder, traditional Brown Act rules typically provide for people, for legislative bodies to meet in person. They always have allowed for remote meetings, but there's some pretty strict rules about that which include that the agenda, the agenda must identify the remote location of each member that will be participating in the meeting. And each remote location must be accessible to the public. Members of the public must be allowed to address the legislative body at the remote location. The media agenda uh must be posted at the remote location. And at least a quorum of the body must be participating within the jurisdiction. So oftentimes, board members find these requirements quite um onerous and instead uh choose to meet in person. There was also some legislation to amend the Brown Act effective um January one, and that's AB two four four nine, that allows for uh legislative body members to participate remotely when there are uh emergency or just cause circumstances and those circumstances are defined in the statute. But what's important to know about this legislation is it's not a way for the whole board to keep meeting remotely. It's just a, an exception for one board member or several board members to meet remotely when uh facts present themselves. And as part of the, as part of the requirements to use this provision in the Brown Act, a quorum of the body must be participating in person at a singular location. Um, this bill has some fairly onerous provisions. There's certain disclosures that need to be made. Um, then there's also tracking because a uh member of the legislative body may only use the remote participation rules a very limited number of times. And so this is all to say that um, when, and when the um governor lifts the uh emergency declaration, which is again likely at the end of uh February, the members of this body will have to start planning to return to the traditional Brown Act rules. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Uh, thank you for that um summary report and any questions from board members? Yeah, I think I think we're all starting to hear these kinds of things from our respective bodies too, but uh yeah, thanks for that report. Any requests from the public, uh, Miko on this?
I have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Okay, well, thank you. And um, this is under information only, so we don't need to take any action. Yes. Um, next is our schedule for next year and uh, uh, Margaret, you wanna tell us about this?
Sure. This is our proposed meeting schedule for the upcoming year. Um, I should note that there's already a correction. I think January sixteenth, that was a typo. My apologies. What we are saying, why we are saying this is provisional is that we are still working with our colleagues in our member agency jurisdictions to confirm venues. We know that there are some that are available, but we are still waiting on confirmation from others. Until we have all of our venues confirmed, we are just saying, please hold these dates. We will send out calendar or, or um, you know, calendar invitations for these dates so that you'll hold the dates and times. And when we have venues confirmed, uh, we'll bring this forward probably next month for your approval and acceptance of the meeting dates. Typically, third Thursday of every month at three thirty in the afternoon. With the exception of December, which will be the second Thursday, so that we avoid Christmas holidays. August has typically been the recess month. Um, if you would like to continue that, we, we will have um August as the recess month with no meeting. Um, upon your confirmation of um acceptance of venues, acceptance of a, a month with no meeting and a month on the second Thursday. Next month, we will confirm the full calendar. This is just the heads up.
Any questions or comments on the upcoming count? Uh, yeah, Pat?
Yes, thanks. Um, just one, um, uh, our city takes uh, uh, the uh, our summer break in the month of July, uh, and maybe we're the outlier amongst the agencies. And if that's the case, then we should keep it as uh, we have it. Um, but I just wanted to check on uh, how that, what the other uh agency schedules are for summer recess.
We, uh, we do August in the county.
Yeah, we, we do August uh in EPA and
I honestly don't know when we do it in Menlo Park.
No, no, no recess, no recess from Menlo Park.
No problem. Uh, so it, it should be where, what accommodates the bulk of the.
Yeah, I think it had been the majority at some point where we tried it, you know?
Good enough, thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I think, again, we'll get an updated one with the places also. And once things are confirmed, so thank you for that. And then we'll move on to uh our director's reports and other stuff.
And because we are stretching into the evening, I will just do a haiku report.
Yes.
The highlights for Reach Two. Um, please mark your calendars for February. We'll do a study session on Reach Two costs, funding and schedules. So you'll anticipate, please anticipate a, a deep dive into Reach Two in February. And good news, as you recall, the Department of Water Resources IRWM grant was something that we missed because of our inability to get permits and lawsuit wrapped up by the deadline. However, lawsuit being wrapped up, permits being applied for, we reapplied for the IWRM grant and have acknowledged its receipt. We will be receiving funding in the amount of three point seven million dollars. So that's more than we had before. Uh, less than we asked for, but significantly more than we had before. That's all good news. Um, in other, let's see, uh, Safer Bay news, we have uh I think you may have heard in the community members' comments, we have recently uh benefited from a community committee meeting uh in early December where about thirty to thirty-five people attended and we have the benefit of their great input. It was very well attended and well facilitated meeting. The bad news is on December fifth, we were finally notified that our application to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation was not successful. They were able to fund fewer than a hundred of the four hundred and fifty or more applications that they received for this nationally competitive grant. And in other news, on December fifth, there was the first in-person meeting of the MAC, the multi-agency coordinating committee that uh ensures that emergency responders and emergency preparedness for both sides of the creek uh meet and are a well-oiled machine. So we met thanks to the coordination of Chief Ken Duker. Um, I want to acknowledge Kevin Murray's participation and leadership in the preparation for that as well. It was a very successful tabletop exercise and uh I think we he made good use of the exercise and identified a couple of opportunities for improving emergency communications and are, and are working through uh PIO communications. So a very effective and uh long anticipated in-person meeting. That's probably the nut meat of things. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments on the report? We haven't written. Uh, from board members or the public, do we have any requests to speak?
I have not received any requests to speak on this item.
Okay, um. Our next item uh is uh board member comments, information items, requests, announcements uh. Well, I want to start out just by thanking everyone for this whole year. Obviously, our board members, our staff and the community and other agencies that we work with and wish everybody a good break, uh, good um uh, happy holidays and uh, I saw that Menlo Park does take their break in July, so we might have to flip a coin next time then for, for or I don't know, the Water District, do we have any information on the Water District? But anyway.
Chair, uh, Chair, this is Nye. Uh, we do not have uh summer recess.
No recess.
Most recent.
So, so we have a tie, so maybe we'll flip a coin or maybe we'll go to July since we've done August, you know, the last few years. Anyway, yeah, so uh, Pat, I, I think I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, uh, thank Chair Abrika for uh uh, a well-managed year and, and um, and, and thank everybody uh on the board for uh, pleasure of serving with you. I don't expect that I'll be uh on the board uh next year. And um, so I, I just wanted to uh say my thanks and, and appreciation and um uh, look, I look forward to staying in touch on these issues.
Anybody else, any? Yeah, well, thank you, Pat, then for your, your service and I'm sure we'll, we'll hear from you as you, I know you have a great interest in this, so obviously feel free to let us know your thoughts, comments. Okay. Alright, um, well, I think at this point, we Alright, um, well, I think at this point, we, uh, we stand, uh, adjourned, uh, about five twenty. And so, bye, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everybody.